Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a special meeting, City Council of Pearland, for November the 27th of 2000. Can't believe it's that late in the year, 2017, at 6:00 PM. I've called an order for an executive session of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, a consultation with city attorney regarding potential litigation. Obviously, in executive session, we cannot make a decision, but upon return to open session, council has the opportunity to make any decision they feel like appropriate at that time. This time, we will recess into executive session at 6:01. The council had returned from the open session at 6:47. Moving to, there being no further business by, and response from the council, their meeting in executive session, and as a result, I will move to item two on our agenda, which allow me to adjourn this special council meeting at 6:45. The council will start in just a few moments. Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a regular meeting, City Council of Pearland, for November the 27th, the year is already gone, 2017, at 6:30, and we're trailing just a little bit behind. If you please rise, we'll have a notification tonight by Councilmember Buck Stevens. Excuse me, Constable Buck Stevens. And we'll follow up with a pledge of allegiance by our police chief, Chief Salz. There he is, right there. Make sure he doesn't get lost in the crowd out there. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, following your invitation tonight, I ask for your blessing upon this meeting and upon these people being here, and upon our community. We ask that you guide us and have us do what's right in your will and your eyes. We ask that you watch over us as we go home tonight, be with our friends and family about this holiday season, and remember, or remind us, of what the season is about. Also, be with our military, our responders, and all those that are in harm's way, and guide them, and keep them safely, and return them home to their families each and every night. Lord, we ask that you watch over this meeting, all these things we ask in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, our Texas pledge?
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Want to express all of your being, my pleasure being, seeing all of you people in the audience tonight. It's really nice to have our citizens with us, and those who we hope will soon be our citizens. In the process, I just wanted to tell you that I just got through having a cataract surgery on both eyes, so I see no evil. And I'll be careful to speak no evil, and, at this point. But I do want to recognize, I'm an Eagle Scout, and I want to recognize the young man here who's working on this Eagle Scout badge, a Court of Honor, and it's called Stephen Bo- Connell. Would you stand up back there? There he is. There he is. Five. Bohannon. Stephen Bohannon. We are fortunate, so fortunate in Pearland to have some very proactive Boy Scout troops, and we have some, surprisingly enough, a lot of people don't really realize this, we have a lot of young ladies who are getting their Gold Star. And there's one that's coming up, I believe, that's the first part, right after the 1st of 2018, will be going through the process of getting her Gold Star. And that's the equivalent of an Eagle Scout in the Boy Scout movement. So we've, we're very proud of them, and I want to also compliment our, our police force and our public safety people. Chief Spires has done a superb job for us, and Wisconsin Constable Stevens has been, I want to say one thing about Mr. Stevens. He has made such a tremendous contribution to so many organizations in our city, and I'm very proud of what his appearance has been, because it has meant an awful lot to the citizens where he is not only just appearing, he's usually taking a proactive position in working with them on their projects. And so I appreciate that so much, and Buck, thank you, and Chief Spires, thank you very much. And Stephen, thank you very much for being here tonight. So let us move into our agenda. We do have a roll call, and all of our council members here, except for Mr. Little. And at this point, I'd like to have open this session up to any citizen comments that we'd like to make at this point. Are there any comments from any of the citizens at this point? These are general comments. Hearing done, let us move in our agenda to item number five, which calls for a public hearing. Let me open a public hearing at 6:50. I've got a council, a clock on my table here, says 6:52, and the wall that says 6:50. So let us go on the wall, because you can track me as I speak, at 6:50. Moving to item one, public hearing for creation of a reinvestment zone, number 29, in the lower Kirby District. And I'll call upon the staff to make a comment on this process.
Mayor, I'm going to make a few comments about it, and before you get into the public hearing portion, but just to let council to know that this is, again, a public hearing for the creation of a reinvestment zone. As you indicated earlier, it's in the lower Kirby District area. Specifically, as you can see, there is a map of this area. It's located at Kirby Drive, North Spectrum, and Hooper Road, and this is a property actually currently owned by the EDC. And the public hearing is to determine whether or not it's feasible, and whether the improvements sought are feasible and are warranted in this area. And while we don't necessarily have specifics on what would ultimately be built in this zone, the creation of a zone is a prerequisite in order to be able to ultimately offer any future incentives to a prospect who wanted to develop on the property. One of those types of incentives is a tax abatement. In order for the city to ever consider a tax abatement in an area, it has, the property has to be located in a reinvestment zone. And so the purpose of this hearing this evening is to determine whether or not the council would like to create a zone, and to receive any public comments for or against the creation of a reinvestment zone at this location.
That information in the record. Let's move to item seven on our public hearing agenda. Are there any citizens who would like to make a comment of any sort regarding this proposed development of a reinvestment zone for this piece of property off of Kirby Drive in Pearland? Hearing, I'm seeing anyone moving in that direction. Let me move down to item number eight. Would you give the council an opportunity to express their opinion? Councilmember Carbone?
No comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Moore?
No comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Reed?
No comment.
Councilmember Ordno?
I'm fine.
Councilmember Perez?
No comment, Mayor.
And Councilmember Owens?
No comment.
Good. Does the staff have any wrap-up comments relative to this particular request?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to just make, just moving forward this evening, and then into future council meetings as to what would happen, there is a ordinance, these zones have to be created by ordinance, and so there is an ordinance on tonight's agenda for just the first reading of that ordinance. The second reading of that ordinance would be on the December the 11th, council meeting for consideration. And I just want to make sure council's clear that all that does is create a reinvestment zone, overlaying that property. If there was ever a prospect that was, that the council wanted to consider a tax abatement agreement with in the future, that would have to be taken by separate council action and a separate negotiated agreement, tax abatement agreement, that would be presented to you at that time for consideration.
Okay. If there are questions, hold on this. Hearing done, let me move to item nine on the agenda, which is adjournment, which I shall do at 6:54. And in recognition of my recent cataracts, and the fact that I, I can see all of you, but I, but I can't see up close, so I bought a pair of glasses, so I'll have Governor Perry glasses on me. If you recognize, I always use the orange rib glasses when you rent the president. Let me move into our agenda. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Councilmember Carbone, would you present the consent agenda for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, consent agenda, items A through C, so moved.
Second. Is there any discussion on these items A through C? Hearing done. We have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Okay, moving in our regular new business agenda, item wave, is consideration and possible action. Councilmember Moore, would you do the honor on this honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, a request of South Belt Industrial Park Association, LLC, for inclusion of Annex, Annexation Area I in the city's municipal annexation plan. So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a mo- we now have a motion, not a second. We're in discussion, any discussion items?
I make a motion that we deny the request.
We already have a motion. Sorry. Go ahead, and if, just for clarification, yeah, moving forward on this item, if we could get a motion to amend on whether or not you want to support or deny the request.
I make a motion that we amend this to remove and deny the request. So moved.
Okay, we have amendment, is there a motion on an amendment?
In a second.
We have a second. We need Mr. Secretary to take a vote on that.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Now we're back to the original motion. Is there any discussion on the original motion, or the motion second? We have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed five to one, as amended.
That information in the record, let's move to new business, item number one. Excuse me, item number two. Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you. Consideration and possible action, second and final reading, second and final reading of ordinance number 1548, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion second on the floor. Staff report.
Mayor, Mr. Hardy will just give a brief overview of the second and final reading for you. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mayor and council, this is our second appearance before mayor, council, and the public for reading the ordinances associated with several areas that are proposed for annexation. We have three areas before council tonight on the agenda that you all have detailed information in your agenda packets related to annexation ordinances, 1548, 1549, and 1551, that will be before you tonight. A little bit of information about the calendar of key official activities that have taken place. Council directed staff to develop a service plan and take the directive to annex several areas into the city limits on August the 31st at a regular meeting of city council. We issued the notice of intent to annex to these area property owners on September the 1st. We held a public hearing on October the 9th, and a second one on October the 16th, in accordance with Chapter 43, Texas Local Government Code. We have sent ag-exempt agreements, development agreements, to property owners that qualify for exemption for a five-year period based on agricultural land use, October the 25th, and received six or seven of those back. And we have held a first reading on November of 13th, where council took action to remove Area P from consideration with its vote. This is a citywide map of the areas, with the exception of Area I. Area A, C, and L are before you tonight. Area P has been removed, this is a map that you've seen before. And again, just to give a brief overview of those areas by description, Area A is comprised of 895 acres, located generally north of Brazoria County, Mudd 22, east of County Road 564, south of County Road 92, and west of County Road 48. Area C is generally located 20 acres, generally located north of McCard Road, but in Clear Creek at the northeast corner of nearby Country Place subdivision. And Area L, that is 983 areas located northeast of State Highway 35, and between Dixie Farm Road and County Road 129. And I'm also inclined to provide you with the boundary maps of the areas that are before you tonight for consideration. Ordinance 1548 will address annexation Area A. Area C, annexation ordinance 1549, and annexation ordinance 1551, annexation Area L. And just want to make note that the amended motion, which passed at the first reading, removes certain parcels of land from consideration. This boundary map depicts that parcel as it stands per those removals, and we've also got a revised survey map, as well as meets and bounds in accordance with council's action on the 13th at the first reading of the ordinance. And this is all available for future reference, as you discussed. With that in the record, I pass the balance back to council.
Okay, I appreciate that. Because my eyes were just operating on this last, this middle of last week, I still don't have the visibility I should, so I'm going to ask Mayor Protem if he would conduct that, this portion of the call for the testimony.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have several persons that are wishing to speak on item A. Please limit your time to three minutes. I'll let you know when you're at one minute, when you have one minute remaining, and then when the three minutes is up, I'll also let you know. I'm going to go ahead and call the first person that is in my hand, Gabriela Martinez. Ms. Martinez, the podium's over here. Please say your name and address, just for the record, so we can, or so we can have it on the record when you get to the podium.
I'm speaking in behalf of my parents, Roberto Martinez and Blanca Rivera. We want the right to vote.
What, what, their address, real quick?
2903 Honeysickle Street. Just want the right to vote, and we don't agree with the annexation.
Thank you. The next person that I have is Mr. Hauser, Jared Hauser.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. Dated August 27th, 2017, my wife and I received public notice via postal mail on or about the first week in September due to Hurricane Harvey. Pearland wants to annex our area designated as Section A, comprised of approximately 885 acres of land to include 159 parcels. Another report from the Survey Abstract from J.S. Talmadge reports 895 acres. This is the beginning of a list of discrepancies and confusion that we have received from Pearland Municipality throughout the proposed annexation to include a violation in Texas law code described in a petition filed at the Pearland Courthouse earlier today and emailed to city council. Throughout Section A, on the petition based on Texas Law Code 43.0561C, we received 99 signatures of people from voting age. We also filed a petition based on Law Code 42.051. We received 84 signatures from registered landowners of voting age who received tax statements from Missouri County. These are signed petitions by the people of Section A who do not want to be a part of the city of Pearland. We choose to stay in the rural country of Rosheren, Texas, country as defined by voting citizens of Section A, not a part of a city or urban development, land used for ranching, farming, agricultural, raising of livestock, fishing and raising our children. We were told by city council that we will receive a Pearland city tax along with Brazoria County taxes, which are already overburdening. In return, Pearland council tells us that we will receive a list of city services which we do not want, one being with the fire department services. Nine days ago, on Saturday, November the 18th, we had a fire on our street at 2910 Honeysickle. Pearland Fire Department responded. Normally, they fight urban fires where fire water is supplied from the city water connections. In Section A, there is no supplied water. As a direct result of engine companies from Missouri City, Iowa Colony, and Menville Fire Departments responded to aid Pearland Fire Department, the house structure is a total loss. Please consider if this was your house, or your family was home, think of the catastrophic results that could occur. We also do not need Pearland Police, as we have had the Sheriff's Department for 39 years that we have lived here, and they respond quickly and are very efficient.
Yeah, what minute left, Mr. Hauser?
Thank you. This Sunday, we, this Sunday, there was a wreck at County Road 59 and County Road 48. Brazoria County sheriffs were there as well as DPS in Pearland, as all of our law enforcement agencies really do work well together. In conclusion, we have evidence of 99 voters who are extremely unhappy with the city of Pearland, and do not desire any of the services from Pearland. This has been an awakening of our community, and we want to be left alone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Can you, Mr. Hauser? Just for the record, Mr. Hauser's address was 2807 Honeysickle. No problem, no problem, I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Murillo. If you could, please say your name and address.
Yes, my name is Patricia Murillo. I live on 2815 Honeysickle Street from 1996. I'm behalf of living on that property. Sorry, I don't speak a good English. You send a news, but I never send an English, Spanish. And I want to have to, the right to vote. I don't want Pearland be on my side. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hearn, Shirley Hearn? Sure, okay. Ms. Leah Harris? Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Harris. Just want to remind you to say your name and address.
My name's Leah Harris. I'm at 1719 Oleander Street, Rosheren, and people will know where McNasty's Bar is, I'm on the street, right there. Y'all might know it as County Road 940. I don't think annexation is just a terrible thing, but your timing. Just to make known, who was it that came up and said that they had a meeting October 9th and October 16th? Raise your hand if you were told that you couldn't vote, that you were going to get annexed, and you could not vote. That's what they said at that meeting. There was no vote. We lose. So that's, this was a surprise, this meeting. So, annexation maybe is not a terrible thing, but your timing, you have got to give us warning. We are not living in new homes. We have to fix things. We, if you annex us tomorrow, we will need permits. Licensed contractors, we're country, we fix our own things if we can. We, I am my street, some of you can testify, I have a convenience store on both sides of my neighbor, my street. The street comes out, convenience store, convenience store. Now I get to see people walking my country roads with their six-pack of tallboys, cracking one open, just walking on the street. I don't want to live by that. I'm country. I'm used to security, leaving those, leave your GPS on your seat and leave your car door unlocked. So I'm moving. And now I have to deal with, well, okay, now we need permits for the animals, things needs licensed, you have to fix your place up a little before you move it. Do I need to get a licensed landscaper? You know, let us get out of there. Like, some of us don't want to be there anymore. We are surrounded with subdivisions. That's not the way that we intended to live, okay? Just give us time. That is literally all I'm asking for. I love the police, I love my police, you know, your services, I'm sure they're amazing. I'm proud of Pearland. I just don't want to live in the city, you know, but the city's coming to us, and that's fine. You know, we have lived out there since 1979. 288 was a dirt hill with the promise of a highway. You know, Pearland was a few cattle, there was some cattle going up and down Pearland for sure at that time, and if you'd have told us there was going to be a mall right there, we'd have laughed, we'd have laughed in your face, like, there's no way. And that's fine, it's wonderful. If you like that shopping, and you appreciate, you know, all the conveniences, it's very convenient right now, but for me, you know, people walking to the store drinking their beers, or, you know, the teenage boys lighting lighters up and down my road now doing God knows what, planning God knows what, you know, with the new population, you know, just give us some time. Not asking for, you know, just to turn your back on your good plans, you got plans to be progressive, and that's awesome. But, you know, we have, we like our living too, that's why these, you know, we're here. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Mendoza. Just as a reminder to state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Brenda Mendoza. I live at 2818 County Road 48, and I just wanted to say that we chose to live in the county because that was the lifestyle we wanted for our families. We feel that annexation compromises the lifestyle we have invested in. We're one family, we live on 10 acres of property, and we question the benefit of annexation for the additional taxes that we will most likely have to pay compared to homes in the city that are, one house on a, you know, a lot in a neighborhood. We have utilities that we've invested in, we have private road to the property that we have invested in and maintain on our own. So we just feel that more likely we will be paying higher taxes, but we're not understanding what amenities would be immediately provided that we would benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendoza. Ms. Tanya Vasquez and Rufino Vasquez? Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Vasquez. Just as a reminder, if you could say your name and address.
Hi, my name is Tanya Vasquez. I'm speaking for my dad. We live at 1702 Oleander Street. He's lived here for over 35 years, so we would like to say that we do oppose this annexation. We haven't needed Pearland services for those over 35 years, so we don't want them now. So if you do let us, please let us vote. I know Hurricane Harvey really messed us up, as did a lot of Pearland, so we would like the right to vote, at least. If you don't, then we would have to think about the higher taxes that we would have to pay. If you don't, then we would have to think about the higher taxes that we would have to pay. Um, I have been living at my address and I really don't want my parents to leave there. So please, please don't annex us. We want to stay and we want to live there. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Ms. Cardell, Mary Sue Cardell? Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Cardell.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Mary Sue Cardell. A lot of my neighbors know me as Sugar because I've been living out there since I was ten. Uh, my dad picked that life for us because he wanted the country living.
Your address?
Twenty-nine oh four Honeysicle, Rosheren, Texas. Uh, and of course, I agree with everything Mr. Rod said. I was so, I did not know anything about this to the last two meetings when Mr. K and Ms. Rod came up to me and said, "Do you know what's going on?" And this was all after the hurricane. Of course, I didn't know. I was getting water in my house. My mom was getting water in her house. We were busy taking care of business, take care of our own. We didn't ask money from anybody because we take care of everything. My sister-in-law lost everything. We had to get home for her. My niece lost everything. We had to make sure she was okay. I mean, y'all need to give us the right to vote because this was not fair. I mean, y'all did this right after the hurricane. I mean, I don't know what situation y'all were in, but it was not a good situation for us. So please, if y'all can, please give us the right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Hearn, Louis Hearn? Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Hearn. If you could please state your name and address.
Yes, I'm Louis Hearn. I live at forty-one forty-two County Road forty-eight. Uh, part of the property we have is under, uh, ag. And when we were told at the meeting, uh, about the ag, we were told that we'd probably get an exemption as I have with the county. And, uh, from what I've heard since then, this exemption only goes for five years. Now, I, maybe I'm wrong. I've just, that's what I heard and I'd like to get that clarified. I know you can't talk on, on those matters right now, but, uh, I'd like to be able to talk to your city, uh, city attorneys later on about this. Uh, being a home rule city, you have an awesome responsibility as far as annexing goes. You've heard a lot of the concerns, the people out here. But each, in each one of those people has their own certain things that are bothering them. Uh, one of the things that bothers me is the, uh, the way some of the annexation was done. Uh, I live right next to a trailer park called Willow Manor and it's got a hundred and twenty homes in it. It's owned by one corporation. And, uh, they're exempt from this. Now, I don't know why they would be and everybody else around there not. There was one individual, lives down our street, eight-nine-four, County Road eight-nine-four, that was not brought into it on a ten acre piece. But everybody else, I don't know how that, that came about, but that, that should be looked into. Now, I have my own-
Sorry. About a minute left, go ahead.
Okay. I have my own ideas about, uh, Willow Manor. Uh, at one time, it was the county's biggest problem in the north end of the county as far as police, uh, police problems with the, with the county. And I'm sure that, uh, Pearland doesn't want to annex something like that where they're gonna have to make calls for service in that area. Um, those things like that though, I mean, you, it's picking and choosing that bothers a lot of people out here. And, uh, those things, and I don't believe that, that, uh, the city is going to have, be able to do city services like they should if you're going to annex something. Garbage service, for instance. Uh, the, and as far as, uh, animal control and all these other things, it's just gonna be another area that you're gonna be able to get taxes from and not, and not, uh, provide service for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Katie Velasquez? Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Velasquez. If you could please state your name and address.
Katie Velasquez, thirty-five oh two County Road five-six-four, Rosheren, Texas, seven-seven-five-eight-three. To be honest with you, this is the first time I'm actually hearing of something like this taking place. Um, I've, we've been in our property for three years, first time homeowners. And now we're basically being told that, I mean, we like the ba, lifestyle that we currently have. And I mean, that was one of the reasons we didn't purchase a house in a big city. I mean, I love the area where we in and I do not agree with the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Velasquez. Ms. Adalita Franco? Ms. Franco, are you here? One more time, Ms. Franco. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Franco. If you could, please, please, please say your, state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Adalita Franco. I live in twenty-nine oh two Honeysicle, Rosheren, Texas. I've been there. My husband built my house. He started in seventy-seven, finished it in seventy-eight, seventy-nine. So I've been there forever, me and my girls, Cardell, Mary Sue Sugar, we call her Sugar. Uh, she's been raised there. So I don't know really tell you the truth. I know what y'all are trying to do. If, but I don't like it. And I don't, I just don't feel like crying right now, okay? But I don't want to get mad either. So, my husband passed away in two thousand nine. He was a builder and I have, we had five acres and we, we sold, I think, like four acres. We had more. But I don't like what y'all are trying to do to us. I'm sorry. I'm a Christian person, but I don't like it. So, I've been there. My kids were raised there and we've been, to me, it seems like I've been there forever. The street was a dirt road. All the streets were there. The only thing we had was deers, lots of deers. My property, Ian said, uh, I don't know if y'all familiar with that, uh, Canal, Old Canal? That's the name of it? So, I don't know what y'all, I'm old, I'm seventy-two. I don't know if I can take it, seeing my property being removed. I just hope and pray that y'all understand what I'm saying. And that's it. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Franco. Thank you for those comments. Uh, Ms. Erica Cardell? Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Cardell. If you could please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Erica Cardell. I'm at twenty-nine oh seven Honeysicle Street, Rosheren, Texas, seven-seven-five-eight-three. Um, I like to think of myself as a good person that should have a voice in what happens around me. But, um, according to y'all, it just seems like we're all just dollar bills to y'all. Um, all of the sections combined are gonna be one point two million dollars revenue. And so that's pretty much all it looks like y'all might be looking at right now. Um, but we don't want to take on the debt. We didn't get a, you know, a right to vote in Pearland as it is and we didn't vote for that debt as well. So you do not care about the voices of us little people. Pearland won the voice of the people in two thousand seventeen, but I guess this was before they saw how you're not allowing our voices to be heard. You might be here listening, but none of what we say seems to register unless it will make you money. If you really care about the voice of the people, then you would not be rushing this after the law passed by Greg Abbott to allow us to vote. Greg Abbott said himself in the San Antonio Tribune, "Forced annexation by cities without a vote by the impacted property owners is piracy by government. A tyranny of taxation without representation that would have made old King George proud." Later in the article, he noted how it was very un-Texan to annex without the property owner's vote. In the Pearland Annexation Facts page, it says at the bottom of the first paragraph, "The decision to enact annexation, annexation procedures involving the five areas being incorporated into the city in two thousand and seventeen, which is areas A, C, I, L, when P is left out now, is heavily based on the need to carry out the city's objectives where orderly progression and effective land use management for a rapidly growing community is concerned." Honestly, this sounds to me like you need to benefit from our land. Last time you said that you're not taking our land away, but how else is your community gonna grow? Because there's families living everywhere on that land. So the only way that I'm thinking from reading that is that you're gonna find ways to push us out.
You have about a minute left.
I do not want to pay the taxes into a city and not see any results from it right away. Incorporating us might fit your rich and powerful agenda, but it does not fit ours. We love our country life. We are a community of do-it-ourselves, have always been like that. Most of the houses on our street and in our community were built with the blood and sweat of the people. That is how we want to keep it. I will conclude in asking you to give us the opportunity to vote. The people of this community have worked hard for what we have and have the country lifestyle that we have today. Let us speak for ourselves instead of pressuring us into the city life. And thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Cardell. Elizor Salinas? Okay, thank you. Next person is, uh, Mr. Ray Smart? Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Smart. If you could please state your name and address.
Absolutely, absolutely. My name is Ray Smart. I live at thirty-one fifteen County Road forty-eight. I've got all my money tied up in my home. My taxes are already too high. I do not have a water dispenser to put the fire out at my house. You let them build a service station next door with no fire extinguisher? I don't understand how you city plan that. Everybody else has told exactly how we feel about this situation. This is a terrible situation. The taxes are already too high. Now you're just forcing smaller people out. And I don't think that's very good business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smart. Mr. Alan Evans? Alan Evans? Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Evans. Just as a reminder, if you could please state your name and address.
Uh, yes, my name is Alan Evans. I live at nineteen oh one County Road fifty-nine. And we would like the right to vote and we're not interested in annex, being annexed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Veronica Cardell? Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Cardell. Your name and address, just as a reminder.
My name is Veronica Cardell. My address is two-nine-zero-five Honeysicle Street in Rosheren, Texas, seven-seven-five-eight-three. I just want to say good, uh, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. Uh, section A, uh, good evening, Ma- Mayor Reed and city councilmen. We, the people from the proposed annexation section A, are hereby giving Mayor Reed and the city council, including the city of Pearland, notice that we are filing two petitions against the procedures of the proposed annexation of section A. Ordinance number one-five-four-eight, section four, is unconstitutional, invalid and illegal per the Texas Local Government Law Code, Chapter Forty-eight, Municipal Annexation. Texas Local Government Law Code, Chapter Forty-three, Section Four-three-point-zero-five-six-one, Annexation Hearing Requirements. To include, the municipality must post notice of the hearings on the municipality's internet website. If the municipality has an internet website and published notice of the hearings in a newspaper or general circulation in the municipality and in the area proposed for annexation. The notice for each hearing must be published at least once on or after the twentieth day, but before the tenth day before the date of the hearing. The notice for each hearing must be posted on the municipality internet website on or after the twentieth day, but before the tenth day before the date of the hearing and must remain posted until the date of the hearing. The proposed annex, section A, does not receive the newspaper of city record per your city chapter, section ten-point-zero-three, the Pearland Reporter. Section ten-point-zero-three, official newspaper, the council shall contract additionally, annually with and by resolution, designate a public newspaper of general circulation in the city as the official organ thereof and to continue as such until another is designated and shall cause to be published there in all ordinances, notices and other matter requirement by the chapter, by the ordinances of the city or by the constitution and law of the state of Texas to be published. We have verified with the Pearland Reporter that this paper is not in general circulation in the ETJ, section A, and never has been. The only way we would receive this paper of record is if we subscribe and pay for the service. Thus more, we found conflicting information on the Pearland Journal slash Chronicle and Chronicle website.
You have about forty-five seconds.
Um, we received the Pearland Journal in our area and did not have the public notices listing for annexation, annexations. The Pearland Journal just have articles written up about the hearings. That is just some of the email that we sent out to, uh, councilmen this afternoon. And I just kind of wanted to read that just so that, you know, everybody in our area would know what's going on. Um, we, we don't want the city of Pearland to annex a, our area. And, uh, if you can please just not include us into the, uh, city of Pearland. And I think I speak for everybody here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cardell. Ms. Kaye Hauser? Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Hauser. Please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Kaye Hauser, twenty-eight oh seven Honeysicle, Rosheren, Texas, seven-seven-five-eight-three. Um, I appreciate you giving us time to speak again tonight. I know y'all are probably tired of hearing from me. And I can tell Councilman Perez and I, Councilman Orno, that I may change my mind about what I've been saying about, I call it country and I'll call it rural. But in two thousand and eleven, Pearland called it country. It says, "Information of the city of Pearland." It was on your budget. And it says, I think that was before you two became on the council. It says, "Where town and country meet." So that's why I called it country the last three times I've spoken. Because that's what we think it is. So, anyway, I, I'll get back to this. I also noticed for you guys, you, the city of Pearland has won the Voice of the People Award and that it allows, um, it says, "This award is only given to the top performing jurisdictions that best listen and act for the benefit of their communities. Based on responses from the National Citizen Survey, residents in our community, which is Pearland community, reported the highest levels of improvement for this category compared with participating jurisdictions." So it sounds like you've listened to the people that are in Pearland. We don't get to even vote on this. We don't vote on any of you. We don't vote on the mayor. We don't vote on any of that because we're not allowed to do so. And we don't want part of this annexation. Um, I think everybody up here has showed you their- Um, I think everybody up here has showed you their heart and their soul and, and how much it means to all of us. This is our homes, our forever homes. We've all built this with our, like she said, our, our blood and our sweat and our tears. And we really did. It took us four years, but that's how we did it. I lived in a mobile home, probably fifteen years, and then we built my home. So I can, I can answer a question that Mr. Hearn asked about the zigging and sagging. I know why they zigged and sagged, because if they didn't zig and sag about what properties they, they chose to annex, then it would have put them over the hundred acre, the hundred tracts. And that's according to the section forty-three point oh-five-two, fewer than a hundred tracts of land, which will allow involuntary annexation, which means you won't get to vote for it. Whereas if you were over a hundred, which I challenged the City Council to go back and look at this, because on the corner of forty-eight and fifty-nine.
You have about forty-five seconds.
Thank you. She sold her, her, her land, and that was a ag extension. She sold it on July the seventeenth, twenty-seventeen, before all this came. And she has an ag extension, and that extension will not go with the new owner. So you're less one ag extension, and I will tell you this, out of all of these, out of, out of all of the ag extensions you have on here, you have sixteen unqualified. So I, I challenge you to go back and look at your, your papers that you've done, the green that says all the ag extensions. There are sixteen that are unqualified. I've been at Presoria County Appraisal District, sixteen unqualified. Thirty-three of them are listed, and out of the thirty-three, sixteen are unqualified. So I think you need to go back and look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howser. Mr. Paul Oliva. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Oliva. If you could, please state your name and address.
Yeah, Paul Oliva, fifteen oh three County Road fifty-nine, right on the corner of Honeysuckle. So kinda care, you know, uh, I, I, I don't wanna accept the exempt and plus because, uh, uh, we do a lot for our neighborhood, you know what I'm saying? And I'm kinda on the corner of going into my neighborhood. I built a bus stop there when my kids were little. Now that bus stop belongs to all the children in, in the neighborhood and up and coming families. They sit on my corner, you know, and we care about them kids. I tried to put a light there, and the county came and got on me, said if I put a light there, a flashing light, because people pass flash, you know, sixty miles an hour and all that stuff, but they were gonna find me. And I tried to put a car stop, you know, a car bump in the road, and they told me if I put a car bump in the road, cause everybody's going fast, I was gonna go to jail. So basically, uh, everything's been all right, you know, you know, everything's fine the way it is. I work for myself on my corner on heavy equipment, been there eighteen years this year. And, uh, and, uh, I don't need no more taxes. I got five kids, a wife, lots of bills, and then some, bro. I ain't, I don't need to pay nothing else. So I'm against it.
Thank you for those comments. Uh, finally, last but definitely not least, Mr. Pedraza. Thank you for being here tonight. If you could please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. Rafael Pedraza, thirty-five ten County Road five sixty-four. Um, basically, my property, I've been there about fifty years. I'm thirty-five. It was passed on from the family. Uh, my grandparents were there. Um, I have no issues with progress, moving forward, the city coming in, that whole thing. I mean, we can all foresee that that was coming, period. My problem is I have, win us over as a city. Bring the water in, have everything there and ready for us, bring the fire hydrants, give us those things that are gonna come with the city, and we'll vote for you. But you wanna block us out and not, not give us a chance to vote, make us pay for it so long, and then we get your, your amenities and the things that are coming. So win us over and we can get there. I got a canal there that runs through a part of my property that everybody turns their head and goes, "Nope, it's their problem. Nope, it's their problem. Man, well, it ain't me. Fort Ben County, it ain't me. Pearland, it ain't me." I don't know who ran into all your stuff when they cut everything to give you the rest of the irrigation or the canal coming over and stuff. Everybody points the finger, but now everybody wants my money so that they can come in and do that part of things. And, and I'm not against putting my money towards the city again, but do it right. Give me the chance to vote, win my vote. And we're, we're all in situations right now where some of us did get flooded in. Yeah, I'm rebuilding on mine. Fine, if I gotta pay for a permit, get all the stuff from the city to come in as it, because you came in, well, that's fine, but again, make me want to be a part of Pearland. Make me want to say Pearland is my city, cause right now you're just coming in and I don't, I'm not gonna commit to what you are as Pearland. Everybody here is the voice of the people according to whatever you want and this and that, and that you're listening to the people. But there's at least eight guys on this whole deal that I've never seen turn your head and look at the people that have been speaking the whole time tonight. So I get it. You make business decisions, whether people care or whether it's gonna hurt some people's feelings, or you're just gonna move on and make the progress for the city. But be a part of what you're doing and ownership to the people that are involved in what you're doing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it back to, to the mayor.
Okay. We're back to me giving you an opportunity on the council to, uh, uh, tell us your position on this. And, uh, uh, I think when, Captain Reed, you, you, and thank you very much for speaking. I can't, I can't see the writing on these pages yet, but I wanted to be here tonight to be a part of this process. Thank you for giving me that opportunity. Uh, I think, thank you for each one of you for your comments. I think it's some darn good information that you've shared with us, and I appreciate all of that. So on our agenda now, we have, um, completed the citizens' report, ready for staff report.
Mr. Mayor, uh, again, this is the final action. We've had two separate public hearings and then the first greeting, and this item is for you for second consideration. Um, and again, just to remind, this is, uh, Area A only. Uh, this is the area that includes our future, uh, surface water treatment plant along the canal, uh, between the Lake Savannah and Southern Trails that are built up. Uh, and after review analysis and hearing everything, uh, we do believe it, it's in the best interest of the city to proceed on this. Uh, we have made that recommendation, um, just as we did with Bailey Road a couple of years ago. Uh, have followed all the proper procedures, and it's ripe for your consideration tonight.
All right. A complete staff report.
Yes, sir.
Back to City Council. Uh, Councilor Carbone, did you have some comments on this?
Thank you, Mayor. There was, um, there was a, a public comment, the speaker that had questions about the ag exempt. And I would ask staff that if this does pass tonight, that they, um, go back to the record and reach out to that, uh, that individual to clarify the ag exemption process. I'd ask staff to, um, if this does pass tonight, to reach out to the individual that had the questions about ag exemption to make sure we get those addressed appropriately. That's all the comments I have, Mayor.
There was a, a comment made by somebody, uh, about permits and license contractors to allow them, the homeowners to fix their homes, um, from the damage to, uh, their homes from Hurricane Harvey. Um, can one of the staff members elaborate on how that's gonna work with the, uh, the annexation?
If, if that were, uh, uh, if the, if the annexation were to be incorporated and, and from that effective date forward, um, you know, uh, city requirements would be in place for life safety. Uh, and, uh, the city has had an exemption we passed right after the storm. Uh, there's a, uh, still a permit required to make sure that everything's done properly. Uh, but there's a no-fee permit for, um, existing homes, rebuild related to the storm.
No, just, it's just, uh, just comments, um, your comments and then, then our comments and questions. Um, with, with respect to another comment that was made a little bit earlier tonight, um, I, I think a gentleman spoke about having to pay for, um, uh, a permit for, for something that's already existing. Can staff comment on that and the fact that they'll probably be exempt? They'll be grandfathered in? In other words, if, if it doesn't conform to, um, any of our code, they, they still wouldn't have to make permanent changes? Is that correct, or?
Well, as a general rule, I mean, if the work has been done in the county, uh, properly, uh, there's no retroactive permits. It'd be from that point forward for any work that were to be done, uh, would, would fall under our requirements. So we wouldn't go back, say you need to get a permit for something you did six months ago or anything like that. It'd be from that point forward, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a general proposition that's fair.
For new work that's done after they're in the city.
But no, no one would have to come and get a permit if, if it was a trailer park or something like that? I mean, that would shouldn't exist in that area.
A pre-existing, for instance, a pre-existing trailer park business would continue to exist as a pre-existing. It would be a non-conforming use, but it would continue to exist.
And my last question is, uh, how long is the ag exemption?
The, uh, state law requires that the city offer a development agreement to anyone that has ag exempt property. Uh, and that's, uh, we have those determined by our surveyor who goes out and does the research. And the agreement is for a five-year period. It defers their annexation, the annexation of their property for a five-year period.
If I could add, that's been in state law, so with Bailey and with these, I mean, that's been from the outset, and we've known that, and, you know, would have communicated that as well.
I, I just wanna clarify the one thing, cause I, I think there may be some confusion. Um, I, I come from a rice farming background. My dad was an ag teacher. Um, I, I understand ag fairly well. The ag exemption is only for the development agreement, which is for five years. They can still keep any property tax exemption based off ag for indefinitely.
That's correct. Even after the, let, let's say a five-year period had expired and they wanted to continue using their ag exemption, they could do that. Uh, the, what the five-year deferral does, as long as the property's not developed, then they do, would not be in the city for that five-year period.
Correct. I, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. The property tax exemption and what we're talking about for, for annexation are two totally different issues on that. Um, the, e- everything else I, I've, I've already stated. Um, I've been in y'all's shoes. I've had the city annex property that we've owned. My family's been here since nineteen-ten. I understand longtime Pearland. I also understand the good things that Pearland has done for the community, and I include the surrounding community that's outside of the city limits. Um, and, and when I set on any decision up here, I look at what's best for the community as a whole. And unfortunately, I don't think I've made one vote that the hundred to hundred and twenty thousand people in the Pearland area all would agree was the right vote. So I have to do what I think's best for the long-term future of this city. I want my great-grandchildren to be able to say they've been in this area for two hundred years. Um, and, and that includes doing things that aren't always popular.
Governor Perez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I sympathize with, with all of you. Um, this is a tough decision for us and for y'all. There were, um, there were some comments made, uh, about, um, that are alluded to some protections y'all, y'all feel like you should have. And, and I agree with you. I think you should have some of those protections. The only way we can offer those protections is if you're in city limits. Uh, to the, to the lady that talked about having two service stations built right next to her. If you're in the county, there's nobody who can prevent that. The only people that can prevent that is, is a city that has its own protection. Right now, if, if somebody wanted to come out and buy twenty or thirty acres right next to your home and build a concrete batch plant, right next, within ten foot of your home, there's nobody who can prevent that from happening. Some of y'all alluded to not having that, uh, that protection. A gentleman mentioned about, uh, why we let a gas station go in there with no, with no fire hydrant. We don't permit them. They don't come through us. They would in the future if, when this land's annexed. And, and we can look at it and say, you know, that's right next to a residential area. We don't want a gas station right next to these residential homes. These people have an opportunity to come and talk to us and say, "We don't want this gas station right next to our residential homes." These protections that y'all alluding to, that you wish that you had, the only way we can offer those to you is if you're inside our city limits. Some of you talked about the fire department coming out there and getting joint assists from Iowa Colony and, and Missouri City. You don't pay taxes to any of those guys, but we all come out there to try and protect you. We do our best. You know, for, for those of you who talk about the sheriff coming out and, and provides you everything you need, and the sheriff will come, but the sheriff's, what, the, the, the response time of the sheriff's quite longer than the response time for us. If you call and you say, "Hey, someone's kicking down my door," we're, we're the ones that come. We'll come quicker. Uh, we have, we have joint service agreements with them. We'll come out there and try and protect you. More importantly, if you call and say you have a heart attack, the county has no service that provides that to you. That's us. We coming out, we'll come out, and we'll rush you to the hospital. All of those are services that right now y'all aren't paying for. But we, we wanna provide them to you. Some of you alluded to wanting those protections, and I, I think, I personally, I think that you deserve them, but we can't provide them to you unless you're inside the city limits. For, for the, one of the gentlemen, uh, kind of alluded to, you know, I appreciate y'all wanting to have your right to vote. I, I know that'll change in December first. Um, the gentleman that, that spoke very eloquently towards the end, uh, saying, "Well, you know, we gotta win you over by going out there and spending millions of dollars of an infrastructure improvement and then give y'all the opportunity to make a decision whether you wanna be in the city or not." That's just not fair to the taxpayers who are in the city right now. Uh, you want them to spend millions and millions of dollars for improvements out to you, and then you say, "Okay, well, now we're willing to chip in." That, that's not fair to them. Uh, this is a decision that doesn't just affect y'all. It, it affects everybody who's inside Pearland city limits. And, you know, we have to look at the city as a whole. We wanna offer you the protections. We wanna give you the services that, in, in my belief, I think you deserve, my personal belief. But it requires you to be in the city limits. Nobody's, nobody's gonna come and tell you to leave your home. Nobody has the legal authority to do that. We can't tell you, "Get out of your house." We can't tell you, "We don't like the way it looks, so, so go ahead and start improving it at a huge expense to you." We can't legally do any of those things, whether you're in the city or not. You, you're gonna still live the way you've always lived. You're gonna still be able to do the things you've always been able to do. Will there be a few more regulations? Yeah. But those regulations are designed to protect you. So if your home, if you, some of you don't believe in them. I appreciate that. I can't dialogue with you, ma'am. I understand why you're frustrated. I, I, I can tell you that what, some of the things that you are asking for, the only way that we can provide those is if you're inside the city limits. The only way that you can prevent somebody from developing and impacting you, your neighbor, from selling their land and allowing a subdivision that you say y'all don't wanna live in, um, uh, commercial business that y'all say y'all don't want next to you. And the only way for any of that to have, you have a voice in any of that is for y'all to be inside city limits. And I won't convince you of its benefit, but I believe in ten years, you'll see it. You'll, ten years, as this happens, as this occurs, as you see the benefits, as these things occur over time, you'll see all the benefits and you'll appreciate them. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Yeah, you know, we've, we heard a lot of good things tonight. No doubt about it. My, uh, my position hadn't changed. But, you know, at some point in time, it was gonna be, uh, that you were gonna be annexed. My real concern is I don't think you're ready to be annexed. And I don't think we, as a city, are prepared for annexation. Uh, that was put together by the state legislature, uh, to push that in and, and do that. And that's my concern, uh, them stepping in and, and taking advantage of another city, uh, into the daily lives, whether you're gonna be annexed or you're not gonna be annexed. So that, that's a big concern to me. And I think, you know, it, it was really in a bad time after we went through Harvey. Uh, you know, like I've told the people up here and some of the people in the audience, you know, when you see people on TV leaving out with a, you know, a black, plastic bag, and that's all they have left, uh, that's a big concern for me. There, one of the major concerns is, 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 is the taxes, and that's gonna be the last thing on their mind. If you don't have a house, you don't have a car, you probably don't have a job, uh, and you're leaving out with all the clothes that you got is in a, in a plastic bag. If you don't have a house, you don't have a car, you probably don't have a job, and you're leaving out with all the clothes that you got is in a, in a plastic bag. I don't think that's a good opportunity for anybody on that. So, you know, I just paid my county taxes the other day and the month before I paid my city taxes. And when you get annexed, you'll get a bill in January of that. And I think that's way too soon for something that really wasn't prepared. But that was not us that done that from a city standpoint, but it was the legislature that pushed that through there. So, that's my concern. But my position on it has not changed. It'll still be no on the annexation. And that's from the first time that it just came up.
Does the council have any further questions? Staff have wrap-up comments?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Secretary, we do have motion circuit on the floor.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
No.
Councilmember Carbone.
No.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Motion passed four to two.
Okay, moving in our new, in our agenda to item number three. Councilmember Ordno, would you present this for our consideration?
Consideration and possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 1549, so moved.
Second.
Okay. Staff, staff report.
Mr. Hardy gave an overview for the entirety of the four areas for tonight. I'll just note that this is Area C, 20 acres. It's surrounded by Country Place. And this was envisioned in our plans for, in the comprehensive plan most recently we adopted.
Please, your staff report.
Yes, sir.
Do we have some, have some citizens speak? We did not have any citizens to speak. And I would ask that, any further comments from council? Councilman Carbone, you do have any comments?
No.
Moore.
No, about the same as I have on all.
Yeah, ma'am.
No wrap-ups, okay? Staff, staff have your comment?
No, sir, I don't see.
There are none, Mr. Secretary. We do have motion circuit on the floor.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Okay. Have it passed?
Yes, Mayor, item number four, I'd recommend passing that item.
Okay. The council will pass number, item number I. No, excuse me, number four, which is, which is section I. Moving to new business item number five. Councilmember Owens, would you present this for our consideration?
Consideration of the second of the ballot, ordinance number 1551.
Second.
We have motion second on the floor for 1551. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. Again, Mr. Hardy gave an overview of all the annexation areas. Area L is a large area between Dixie Farm and the southeast portion of the city. And after review of that, recommend your affirmative consideration to bring this in the incorporated city limits.
Okay, I believe we have some citizens to speak. We'd ask some citizens to speak and my vision hadn't improved any, so I'll ask our, just the city, deputy city managers and, future, in the future, our deputies, Mayor Protem, to present these for, in my behalf.
Thank you, Mayor. The first speaker that we have for Area L is Mr. Mark Allen. And just as a reminder, three minutes, try to limit your comments to three minutes or limit your comments to three minutes. I will give you a one-minute warning. And if you could please state your name and address.
Mark Allen, 17626 Airfield Lane, Pearland. I'm against the annexation. I think what you're doing is, is wrong. I think morally wrong. You've got all kinds of reasons to do it, but I do believe it's wrong. I think you're trying to circumvent the state law, which comes into play in a few days. And I think, I think you guys should consider that again. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Hill. If you could please state your name and address.
Trey Hill, 4649 Dixie Farm Road. I'm the owner and operator of Dixie Farm Road Landfill, Hill Sand Company, Pearland Industrial Park, all based on Dixie Farm, all the way around Highway 35. We have about 230 acres. This also serves, I was appointed by Greg Abbott last year to the pilots' ward of Galveston County, so I'm familiar with having people come up here and holler at you. So, I appreciate your time. I will, you know, my, I wanted to stand with my citizens. You know, our family bought that land in the 1960s. We run a mining operation in a landfill. We moved out there for a reason. And now the city is going to overlap us. And I have concerns, let me use the example. We just, all the meetings y'all had, I was working seven days a week, 14 hours a day. We ran that landfill as hard as we could possibly run it to get these hurricanes. We've served Pearland in every disaster you've had. We've mined sand for 50 years. I hauled the first load to Southwick before anything was on 288. What I'm getting at, my concern is, as you overlap me, that you're going to see me differently and not, now what we do is going to be a problem. And that's a problem for us. We can't move. We can't pick up and relocate. You need services. You need guys like me. And I, you know, I'm there to, I serviced, during this last hurricane, we serviced nine cities. Landfills are regional. They're not based on cities. They're based on the state of Texas. And they decide we need to be there. But to be frank with you, I've gotten along great with my neighbors. And for the most part, these guys are all decent people. So, I can't be in favor of the annexation of them or myself. I understand growth. I'm also in the Friendswood Economic Development Corporation in Friendswood. I understand all that. But it just, it looks bad, guys, when, when the state of Texas changed the law and, and, and everything's going to change and we're rushing this through. Most of these people, I don't know if they suffered damage, but I know I couldn't have been working any harder. I didn't have time to deal with this right then. So, I can't be in favor of it. All right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Michelle Fauzon. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Fauzon. If you could please state your name and address.
As many times as I've been up here, I think you guys would know that by now, but I'll be glad to repeat that. Michelle Fauzon, 707 Westfield, Friendswood, Texas, 77546.
Thank you.
I understand that you intend to vote to annex Area L tonight. However, I'm here to strongly protest this annexation. I strongly believe that any such annexation of Area L will be illegal. We have already filed a lawsuit in Brazoria County and we intend to pursue this matter diligently. We strongly believe that the city has violated several requirements of the state law and this annexation at this point would be illegal. We request that the city council take action to put this illegal annexation to rest and restart this process following all the appropriate laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott Arnt. Thank you for being here tonight, sir. If you could please state your name and address.
My name is Scott Arnt. I live at 17800 Airfield Lane, Pearland. I'm absolutely opposed to annexation by the city of Pearland. I have attended the last two meetings on the subject and there are three things that stand out as to the unjustifiable nature of this acquisition. First, it is clear that there's no concrete plan to bring us services. The quote-unquote "plan" is best described as vague, with the quote from council at the last meeting about the routing of services as being six of one, half dozen of the other. This is barely a concept, much less a plan. With all seriousness, I'd say it is a good bet that private enterprise will have people living on Mars before the city of Pearland gets a sewer and water to our property. Second, we've heard a lot about how the people in the ETJ are essentially sponging off the city through not paying for emergency services. This is a bit disingenuous, if you ask me, for we do pay for those services through our county taxes, a portion of which is paid to the city by the county as compensation for those services provided in the ETJ. I do not know how the reimbursement compares to cost, but the city has this as a source for payment of these services and should seek reimbursement of costs from the county, not ram some half-baked, last-minute annexation plan down our throats. Finally, the whole situation with Area L annexation is somewhat bizarre, for lack of a better term. At the last meeting, the boundaries of the area were suddenly changed, excluding the houses along 127. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm very happy that they were excluded and it was the right thing to do. But there were a number of things that transpired that raised my brows. What about the rest of the homeowners in that area? Should we not be afforded the same consideration? One of the city staff stated that the houses on the airport were rundown or abandoned, the implication being that they didn't really matter. I think I can speak for the rest of the homeowners on the airport that we reject that characterization of our homes. You probably haven't figured out yet that there are more residences on the airport than there are on 127, but they are there. They don't look like your house. They look more like a hangar. But they are there and they are our homes. To dismiss us as rundown is classism at worst. Even if we were rundown, what difference should that make? Are we not worthy of consideration? It was Councilman Perez, I believe, who objected to this being characterized as a land grab. Maybe we can agree to rephrase this as a money grab or a land rights grab. You claim that you don't want to acquire and operate the airport, but it was clear at the last meeting that the airport is the prime target in Area L. So, what gives? Is it that you want the tax money? Is it you really plan to acquire and operate the airport? By rearranging the boundaries, it is clear that the claim of recouping emergency services costs is a red herring.
You have about 30 seconds.
In summary, we are faced with an annexation plan that has no plan and is being rushed through to thwart the intent of the Texas legislature. If this were well-planned and thought through, you would know how you were going to get us services and wouldn't be redrawing the boundaries on the fly. I ask you to reject this dog of an idea and let us get on with our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kenneth Edwards. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Edwards. If you could please state your name and address.
Kenneth Edwards, 16810CR127. I'd just like to say, Mayor Reed led your visions doing better. And hopefully you can see your way clear with the rest of this council tonight to not disgrace these citizens, but taking away their right to vote. I think that's absurd that you do that. You know, Councilman Owens here stated the other night that it's 15 to 20 years before there's any plans for sewer or water. You're going to take tax increases up to $3,000 on a lot of the citizens for 15 years and give them very little for it. And I think that's a disgrace. I heard someone say, one of the councilmen, will you drive on our roads? My road is a racetrack through 127. Since they opened the parkway, everybody in Pearland and Friendswood zips up and down my road. You know, I don't go to the county raising the cane with them, but the city, Pearland, using my highway. You know, the, I just don't think that it's right. I think that, you know, you, lucky you're living to be 93 years old, God bless you, and he's been good to you. Most of my neighbors are right at retirement age. They're not going to live a long time. By the time that they'd be getting the services, they'll, they'd be dead. You know, we're not going to get anything for it. I mean, my God. You know, that's a good form of taxation without representation. And I just would ask us, you guys, you know, treat the people right that you're going to represent. And if you don't, don't do the job. I just come out of a job I had 35 years. When I left, they're naming their school after me, December the 11th, and got millions of dollars on the phone. You've got a billion-dollar debt that y'all run up and you're asking us to pay it. And that's the only reason you're wanting to do this, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mike Rathge. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Rath, I'm sorry, Mr. Rathge.
It's Rathge, Mike Rathge.
Rathge.
16732 County Road 127. Been here a couple other times. Thank you, Kenneth, my neighbor. Gentlemen, I want to talk about annexation overall. Wow, this has been an experience. I think you would agree. Politics, it's a high calling. I think that's what Kenneth was getting at. It's a high calling that you're in, like I said my first time up here. Lot of us know this because we're also citizens and businessmen and have high callings. That being said, government, it's about votes and due process. And I do appreciate the due process and that's what we're going through. We haven't had a vote, but we're getting the due process. Now, the question is, are you listening? I feel for A. That being said, American way, government, we are blessed. We, we opened with God. We gave the pledge to our country. And I'm proud to be a Pearlander. Do it right. I tried to say that the first time. You're hearing it time and time again. We are blessed to be Americans, Texans, and Pearlanders. Gentlemen, it is a land grab or, yeah, you're not getting the land, you're getting all of the other stuff. You know all that. We don't have to spell it out anymore for you. That doesn't mean it's illegal, what you're doing. I didn't hear anybody speak up for C. You voted them in, so be it. But you just ignored a bunch of people in A. You took me in when you amended L and I appreciate that. Listen, give us your eye, give us your ear, do what's right. Due process, that's what we're going through here. Thank you for listening, hearing the concerns. There are legalities which you're hearing and you're putting things off. Think about it, you're wise men. Amending L, voting P in or down, all of that, I know you're hearing it, but do what's right. Do what's right. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Callaway.
Yes. Susan Blair Callaway, 17004 County Road 127. Want to thank Councilman Perez, last meeting, for excluding the nine homes. I greatly, greatly appreciate that. But speaking with all the other neighbors, we are still partnered together and are against the annexation. When you can take a piece of property and at the drop of a hat, cut and piece it out, why can't you, again, at the drop of a hat, piece out the whole parcel? We did it at the last meeting, we can do it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Elliott.
Yeah, my name is Michael Elliott. I live at 1815 County Road 130, Pearland. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. As you know, there's been a court order filed to stop this annexation and you got a temporary, there was a temporary restraining order issued, which you appealed and managed to get it extended today. I don't know, I don't know about the laws and how that works, but somebody, is there anybody here of former military? Are you former military? Have you been in the military, fought to protect our country and our constitution? Have you been in the military, fought to protect our country and our constitution? I spent twenty-four years of my life with the U.S. Air Force defending our constitution and our civil rights. I defended the right to have a vote on things that affect my family and me. Our state legislatures and our governor passed a law allowing this democratic process to be given to residents to vote on whether they wanted to be annexed. Due to the date this law takes effect, December first, 2017, you men have taken upon yourselves to not allow this vote by implementing this annexation to take effect November thirtieth. Did you ask me if I wanted to be annexed? Did you ask any of your constituents if they wanted you to annex us? I've survived here since nineteen ninety, that's when I bought my property at the airport. Twenty-seven years I've managed to go along without Pearland services, and I don't think I need them now. You even admitted that there's no plan in place to provide water or sewer, and the county maintains our roads, so basically you're spending nothing, and all you're gonna do is gain one point two million dollars in revenue income, which I'm gonna have to contribute to, and I get absolutely nothing in return. You trying to convince me that this isn't just a taxable land grab, a money grab? I don't understand why you don't just allow the democratic process that thousands of men have fought and died for, let it take place. Wait until December and let us vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That completes citizen comments for tonight. I'll pass it back to Mayor Reed.
Okay. Start with what you Owens. Comments?
I thought you was calling me down for something.
Order you out of here.
I appreciate all the people who came out tonight, and ones came out and just discussed and talked on this. To let you know, I won't be voting for the annexation of this for many of the reasons that people spoke tonight. I appreciate your service in the Air Force. I was in the Navy from sixty-seven to seventy-one. So, appreciate it, thank you. So, I, you know, I don't have anything else to say. I think, you know, during the course of this, in the last couple of meetings, I've said everything that I wanted to say, but this one is no, which is no different than it was last time.
No additional comment, Mayor.
I've said everything in the previous meetings.
No comments, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Last meeting, when we had a vote on this, I did confuse my vote, so my vote will be a little different tonight.
I'm gonna stick with the same vote I had last time, Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify something. Earlier, we were talking about development agreements for the ag-exempt properties. There was one property owner who, we finally got in touch with the property owner, person with power of attorney. It's an elderly individual and had not been able to communicate. We just recently, we pursued the individual so that we could try to track down who had the authority to execute a development agreement if they wanted to. And we were not able to confirm until late today that they would like to do a development agreement. And so, the power of attorney over that particular property is a gentleman by the name of Tommy Ford. So, I would like the motion to be amended to reflect that we would add an additional development agreement for the ag properties to this ordinance being passed, so that that can be added on. I think out of fairness to the property owner with this circumstances of the estate, most of those needed to be in by the end about a week ago, but given special circumstances, I think that development agreement should be included as well.
Can you provide the wording?
If the council could just reflect to include the development agreement as discussed by the city attorney, that will be sufficient.
I move for that amendment.
Second.
We do have a motion second on amendment. Secretary?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
This is for the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Amendment motion passed, six to zero.
That information, though, we have a regular motion, motion second floor, on the floor for that.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
We have a tie, a three-three, a tie vote.
Motion Perez, aye.
Mayor voted aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, four to three.
It'll be four to three. Okay, moving in our agenda. Councilmember Carbone, would you, out of six?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R. 2017-245, so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second we're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We have two pathway projects that have been in our capital improvement program for some time. They are moving forward each on their own track. These two items are the advanced funding agreements with TechDOT, so this is a procedural matter to get teed up and get more quickly the monies from Tech, through TechDOT for the projects. It's all have, sir.
That completes your staff report.
Yes.
Okay, does the council have any question or comment on this item? Councilmember Carbone?
Mayor, could, I'd like to ask staff, can you remind me of what the approximate length of this project is?
Sure.
Okay. All right, I guess the issue I have, and I know we're getting eighty percent matching funds on this, but we're, in here, we're gonna issue one point three, one point four million dollars of certificate of obligations for a two-mile trail. And I, I don't know, I struggle with that. Even though we're getting, you know, eighty percent matching, I still struggle spending that much of non-voter-approved debt on a project like this, so that's where I'm at. That's all have, Mayor.
Moore, you had a comment on it?
No, Mayor.
Councilman Reed?
No comments.
Councilman Perez, any comments?
No, Mayor.
Yeah, I just have one question going through there. Tony, you can leave work and walk that trail once I get it on there. But, you know, I've been... I've been getting a lot of complaints about the wild hogs in there, and the city has nothing to do with those anymore. We used to catch them, but now the people that, where I live in Green Tea, they're talking about the wild hogs coming through there, so I think probably seeing where this is going right alongside the creek through there and across over on a bridge, I guess, to the connecting trail, that's something we should probably look at on through there, because you get people walking through there and you get those hogs, you know, they don't care how old or how young you are. They can be pretty vicious through there, so I think we need to look at doing something to try to get back in that. I think it's under the chief's side of the business now, I'm not for sure. But, that is, you know, if we're paying twenty percent, and it's three million and something, that means we're getting a fairly good lump of sum out of the state for that. And I hadn't looked at it, what's really the width on that?
Ten feet?
Ten feet? And the concrete?
Yes, sir.
How thick?
Or we have six on our major trail system along the creek.
Is the county gonna use that to drive their dump trucks on to get down and work on the creek?
For the most part, we're going to try to keep it out of either flood control or DB4's jurisdiction where it can, and then have crews with them where it needs to be within their jurisdiction to keep it as far out as it is normal in the area required as possible and where they're minimizing any...
Yeah, okay. That's gonna be what, eight feet? Eight?
Ten feet.
Ten feet.
That's the requirement to meet, Ash took out on bike lanes.
All right.
Does that complete your report?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have one more question, Mayor.
Okay.
On page four, it shows the operational maintenance cost. So, in 2019, it shows nine thousand eight hundred, then it goes up in 2020 to seventeen thousand six forty, and then 2021 to eighteen five twenty-two, and then 2022 at nineteen four four eight. What exactly is the operation and maintenance cost for this trail?
The bulk of it's gonna be mowing along the trail, and the reason in 2019 it's a smaller number is that's a partial year of operating and maintenance funds, and then the subsequent years just has an inflation factor included. That's why you see the increase year to year.
Yeah. And I think we should, perhaps, some kind of thank you note to the Texas Highway Department for their contribution to this. I think it's this, one of the things that people really, really look forward to are parks and jogging trails and bicycle paths and things of that type, and we're beginning to put those together. It just takes a while. We've gotta put forty-eight square mile footprint, and then that takes a little while to get all of those in, even when you have a lot of money. So, that's good, so I'm real proud of that. Any further comments from council? Mr. Secretary, we have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
As long as we take care of the hogs. Aye.
Motion passed, five to one.
Okay, that information record, let's then move to item number seven on our agenda. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R. 2017-248, so move.
We have a motion second on the floor, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another advanced funding agreement with TechDOT. This is, of course, as you just mentioned, an eighty-twenty, eighty percent provided by federal and state money, twenty percent provided by the city. This length of this particular trail is point eight one, tenths of a mile, and it is ten foot wide as well, and we recommend your approval.
Okay. Council, is that, Councilman Carbone, you have any comment on this?
Yep, same comments as last time, much shorter trail, we're still spending tons of money issuing more COs, so it'll be the same vote for me.
So, my question is the same as last, I assume it's the same answer?
What was your question last time?
What the O and M cost was.
Oh, okay, you didn't like the maintenance of it. Okay, Councilman Reed?
No comments.
No comments.
Councilman Perez?
No comments, Mayor.
I don't know, council.
No, no comments.
No comment, okay. Okay, we have, council and staff have made comments, and we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Motion passed, five to one.
Anything on the record? Let's move in our agenda to... Number eight, nine, and ten, which the secretary will, I mean, the attorney will phrase those for us, and Councilman Reed will make the motion.
Yes, Mayor, just before the official motion is made and possibly seconded, I'd like to just sort of fill the council and the public in on what's going on here. Items eight, nine, and ten are authorizing the city to proceed with the acquisition of property through the use of eminent domain. The city's been in the negotiation with property owners in the Lower Kirby area, and there's a group of properties that have been identified because of their unique small shape and access issues that would be suitable for public improvements in the Lower Kirby area, and that's the purpose of this, these resolutions that are being considered tonight is to authorize the staff to proceed with that acquisition process. State law does require that each one of these resolutions have the caption be read aloud, and as following with past practice, I was gonna go ahead and read all three of those captions aloud for council, and then at that point, if the council wants to consider all three at one time, then a motion could be made accordingly.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and start the laborious process of reading this, so bear with me. Okay. Recommend a motion authorizing staff to proceed with the Consideration Possible Action Resolution Resolution, City Council, City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple titled a certain property associated with public improvements in the Lower Kirby vicinity, being that zero point nine two four two acres of land located, whoops, hit the wrong button there, bear with me, there we go, located in the James Hamilton survey abstract eight eighty-one, Harris County, Texas, which is out of the one-acre tract described in the deed from Germant Singh Sunny to Pioneer Builders, Inc., recorded under file number two zero one six zero zero eight zero one two seven, in the official public records of the property, real property of Harris County, Texas, out of lot three of the James Hamilton survey subdivision, a subdivision of the record in volume eighty-three, page three forty-two of the deed records of Harris County, Texas, for the construction and maintenance of water, sewer, drainage, and road improvements on certain real property described herein, authorizing the city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take such actions that are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain. Let's see. Consideration Possible Action Resolution 2017-242. A resolution, City Council of Pearland, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple titled a certain property associated with public improvements in the Lower Kirby vicinity, being that one acre of land located in the James Hamilton survey abstract eight eighty-one, Harris County, Texas, which is all the one-acre tract described in the deed from Harris County to Pioneer Builders, Inc., recorded under file number two zero one five zero two six nine six one nine, in the official public records of real property of Harris County, Texas, and out of lot three of the James Hamilton survey subdivision, a subdivision record in volume eighty-three, page three forty-two of the deed records of Harris County, Texas, for the construction and maintenance of water, sewer, drainage, and road improvements on certain real property described herein, authorizing the city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take such actions that are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of power of eminent domain. And finally, Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number 2017-241. A resolution, City Council, City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple titled a certain real property associated with public improvements in the Lower Kirby vicinity, that being one acre of land located in the James Hamilton survey abstract eight eighty-one, Harris County, Texas, which is all of the one-acre tract described in the deed from May Walker Constable Precinct, number seven, Harris County, Texas, on behalf of Lower Kirby Pearland Management District to Pioneer Builders, Inc., recorded under file two zero one six three five four six two five, in the official public records of real property of Harris County, Texas, and out of lot three of the James Hamilton survey subdivision. A subdivision of record volume eighty-three, page three forty-two of the deed records of Harris County, Texas, for the construction, maintenance of water, sewer, drainage, and road improvements on certain real property described herein, authorizing the city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain.
That completes your reading?
That completes all three of those.
Okay. Councilmember Reed, would you present this?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So, so I'll go ahead and make a motion for all three, uh, consideration of possible action...
Excuse me, I can interject, uh, as I, I'm reading all three of these, and the, um, the intent is actually, it, right now, the purpose is for the construction, maintenance of water, it says water, sewer, drainage, and road improvements on certain real property, and actually, the, uh, the, the public facility should be in there, because, uh, that is not included in here, and, uh, I would recommend, if you're gonna go ahead and do that, to amend what the city attorney just said, to reflect, uh, the, uh, public facilities in all three of those resolutions.
So, I'm gonna make a motion for, uh, agenda items eight, nine, and ten, uh, with, and, and amend, amend what's stated here with what the city attorney just stated, uh, what, what the city attorney just stated and read. Um, I'm gonna start off with agenda item number eight, Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R. 2017 dash two four three. Agenda item number nine, Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R. 2017 dash two four two. And, uh, agenda item ten, Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R. 2017 dash two four one, so moved.
Second.
Do we need, uh, you, since you're the staff, do you have any further staff report on this?
Uh, no, Mayor, I have no other comments other than the fact that, uh, as you can see from these descriptions, these are, it, it is a single property owner that owns all three tracks.
Okay, good. And we used, we had previously a map of that on the screen, but we don't have it up here right now. Um, we, we have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Moving in our agenda, item number eleven, Councilmember Ordno, would you do the honor?
Consideration Possible Action, first reading of ordinance number fifteen fifty-three, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, uh, this is the item that we had the public hearing on earlier this evening. Uh, what we're recommending is the creation of a reinvestment zone, uh, establishing fourteen point five two six acre rean, or reinvestment zone in the Lower Kirby District, and we're recommending approval.
With, uh, the reading of that in the record and the staff report, just council, starting with Councilmember Owens, you had a comment on this item?
Yep.
Councilmember Perez?
No, Mayor.
No. Councilman Reed?
No.
Councilwoman Moore?
No, Mayor.
And Councilman Buck.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Um, just to, to clarify, this was the, the hearing we had earlier tonight, and, um, I believe you, the staff earlier said that this is just creation of the zone, this is not any abatement at this point, this is essentially putting in place so that if Matt and the EDC bring us something, then it's, it's there, ready to go.
Uh, yes, Councilmember, Member Carbone, that is correct. Uh, this is, all it does is it, it creates a zone on paper, which would then allow the council the flexibility in the future, if you deemed appropriate to do a tax abatement with, uh, a company that you felt was worthy.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mayor, I do have one, uh, quick question. Uh, with this, um, with this inclusion into the reinvestment zone, are we also including it into the regional drainage plan, um, and again, eventually aiming to get the detention pond closed?
Yeah, th- this area already is in the regional detention plan, um, and so in the future, we would be able to get rid of the pond, I don't think we're gonna do it as part of this project comes to fruition, I don't know if we'll do it right away, but in the future, we would be able to, uh, fill in the pond and utilize that pond for another purpose.
Uh, like couple it if we have an investor that wants to take the back of the property.
Sure, if we, or if we need parking for, if the CSI building needs parking, is justified by a tenant with rent, that would be the big reason.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion, council? Mr. Secretary, we have a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Move to our agenda item twelve, Council Perez, would you do the other?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number R. 2017 dash two two, or, I'm sorry, two four four, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor, I believe, and the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, what this is, uh, this item before you this evening, is we're recommending a contract to EMS management and consultants for our EMS billing. The total estimated annual cost for this is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per year. What we're recommending is that, um, a, the initial term would be a three-year time period with two additional terms, uh, if we decide to move forward with those additional terms. Just for additional information, we sent out an RFP, we received a total of twelve different individuals that submitted proposals. We called in the first three, the top three firms, and what you have before you is the recommendation from representatives from, um, finance, the fire department, and also from purchasing, we recommend your approval.
I complete the staff report on that item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's see what the council has, uh, input on this. Councilman Carbone, do you have?
Yep, thank you, Mayor.
Comments on this?
Yes, sir. Uh, in reviewing the, the scoring recap, it shows that two of the, the firms tied in terms of rates and expenses, yet when I was looking at the proposals, they had different rates. Can you help me understand how that occurred?
I can. Um, uh, first of all, I'll let Bob make a few comments, Bob, our purchasing, uh, manager, but basically, when they evaluated the rates, the scoring there that you have on your sheet for the actual rate calculation was incorrect, and Bob's gonna go over the details on that, but they still were the overall recommended, uh, best value for the city.
That's a very astute observation, by the way, Mr. Carbone. Uh, and, and what transpired there, normally in an RFP, the, the pricing component of the RFP is the most objective criteria that we have in there. So typically, we get the evaluators to look at the other criteria, we then plug in the numbers as appropriate in the, in the pricing. In this case, uh, all I can say is my buyer had a brain freeze and took the evaluations back, including the pricing as determined by essentially laypeople, non-finance people, where I would imagine that probably their general impressions of the firms led to the pricing as, as reflected there. However, we have plugged in, and what, what those three numbers should be in the pricing component, it would be, uh, the non-Digitech, the non, uh, AMSMC, I, I'm, I'm drawing a blank on the third, on the, on the two point nine percent company.
Ambulance medical.
Thank you. That company should be awarded the twenty points, then Digitech should be at thirteen points, because what we do to allocate those points, obviously, is take the lowest bidder divided by the subject bidder times the twenty points to, to aggregate a score, and then, in, in that scenario, uh, AMSMC would have fourteen point nine points. Uh, so the total scores would result in eighty-six point nine for AMC, AMSMC, uh, seventy-nine point six for ambulance medical billing, and sixty-seven point four points for Digitech. So, the, the overall standings didn't, and that's why I think I didn't catch it, because I knew in my mind what the rankings from the non-pricing, uh, criteria had been, and it didn't alter that, so I didn't catch that the numbers weren't correlating.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
That's why we have a Carbone. We're fortunate to have him. Any other questions by, uh, council at this point? Staff having their up, uh, come, wrap-up comments?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Secretary, we do have motion second on the floor for this item.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number twelve, Mayor Council Issues for Future City Council Agendas. Council have any ideas? Start the new year. Hearing none, let's, um, uh, agenda, my agenda, so, they, you, business continued, and there is other business, and, uh, I, when I go down to item thirteen, it gives me an opportunity to adjourn, so I will adjourn this council meeting. Thanks all of you for being here, thank you for your input, you're a wonderful bunch of people, thank you. We adjourned at eight forty-four.